From non-action.
Okay, discussion.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
So is it California?
One fifty-one. Testing, testing. Okay. Good evening. Are we ready to go? Recording? Good evening, today is Tuesday, May twenty-third. We'd like to welcome everyone to our board meeting. Agendas are at the door as you come in. Or you can pull it up online. Board members present in the boardroom, we have members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. We also have Dr. Bryant, our superintendent, our executive assistant, Amanda Foster. We don't have a student representative tonight, but it is the last day of school. So I don't blame him. We also have several senior staff that are available this evening. So with that, roll call, please join me for the pledge, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just one second. We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion, and it is with honor and respect that we recognize all Indigenous people who live and learn in our community. Moving on to our agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second? Moved by member Jacobs, second by member Holloman, to approve the agenda as it is written. Is there any opposition to the approval of the agenda? Seeing no opposition, the agenda is approved. Now for our opening statement, we do want to thank everyone for being here, we welcome you to our board meeting, and we want to thank you for continuing to support the school board with your time, your talents, and your tax dollars. It's a partnership that we can't do, we can't do what we do without the support of our community. And that brings us to our reports, I don't think we have any tonight because we don't have our student report, and we had a real good report from the military during our work session today. And so that brings us to item C, which is our goal monitoring technical reports. Dr. Bryant?
Thank you, Madam President. So our first of two technical presentations tonight will cover reading proficiency, so we can go to the next slide. So you'll see on this slide, it states that the goal of increasing reading proficiency to eighty percent by May twenty-twenty-six, and one of the interim goals we monitor is increasing the percent of reading proficiency via the FastBridge screener. Before the community's awareness, we're in a transitional period with our goal monitoring reporting because the state adopted a new assessment called the AK-Star, and also supports a new literacy screener called M-Class. So some slides will display historical FastBridge data, and others will show the most current data from M-Class, next slide. So this slide shows our FastBridge data over time, the solid line on the graph describes reading proficiency rates, and the dotted lines represents the yearly target. The table graphically shows the data and breaks down progress by fall, winter, and spring, and spring twenty-twenty-three, as you'll see on the chart, is when we transition to a new screener called M-Class. So this slide goes into more detail of the new screener, M-Class, and its alignment to the Alaska Reads Act that we can discuss further at our next goal monitoring discussion. Next slide. All right, oh, actually, go back, I apologize. So this slide describes how M-Class data is reported out to families to keep them aware of their students' progress. During our goal monitoring discussion in June, we'll be prepared to discuss your questions about how performance is measured on the new screener, as there will be differences in how proficiency is measured on the tool. The graphic that you'll notice on the slide provides some insight and advance of our discussion in June. This slide compares the differences of our previous screener measures to the M-Class screener measures. This new screener means we'll have a new baseline for interim goal one point one, and the new tool allows us to understand and measure proficiency in a different way. That can be a component of our discussion in June as well. So now that we've implemented M-Class in spring twenty-twenty-three, this slide shows the new baseline in relation to the interim proficiency goal. So this is M-Class data. The chart also states the distance from next year's target goal of sixty-seven percent. This slide disaggregates our baseline spring twenty-twenty-three M-Class data by grade level and participation rates. The colors describe how close we are to the target, and you can see more on the legend below. And this slide disaggregates the baseline spring twenty-twenty-three M-Class data by student populations. The bottom of the chart describes how many schools are below, near, and on target for the goal. And the next few slides give details on the state of implementation, next slide. So this slide shows the relation, or sorry, this slide, this slide shows the relationship between professional development, instruction, and multi-tiered systems of support in meeting the goal. And this slide shows the status of implementation across the five strategic pillars, which include curriculum, instruction, professional learning, data, and multi-tiered systems of support. So that concludes our first technical presentation, and we'll circle back in June to have a robust conversation around the academic strategy. So we'll hop right into our second technical report on the math proficiency goal. So our goal, as stated on this slide, is to increase math proficiency to fifty-five percent by May twenty-twenty-six. Our interim goal was for growth on the map assessment to increase by sixty percent by twenty-twenty-three. And on this slide, the graph shows historical spring proficiency data in relation to the target of seventy percent. And the chart below breaks down the map data by fall, winter, and spring. This slide breaks down map data by grade level, and you can also compare spring to fall data. And this slide disaggregates the map data by student subpopulations, and the bottom of the chart describes how many schools fall in each category of proficiency. This slide describes interim goal two point three, which is to increase the percentage of students below proficiency who achieve accelerated growth to twenty-three percent in spring twenty-twenty-three. So this chart breaks down the interim goal data by grade level and shows participation rates. And this slide disaggregates the data by ethnic group. And this slide shows interim goal two point three data broken down by special subpopulations. And the final few slides give details of the status of implementation. So similarly to reading, that slide broke down the goals by instructional focus in classrooms and shows that continuous loop between professional learning, instruction, and using data to make adjustments. And this slide provides an overview of the state of implementation across curriculum, instruction, professional learning, data discussions, and MTSS, which I imagine will be a big focus when we come back to this topic in June. And that concludes our technical reports, we'll follow up with a goal monitoring discussion on both of these at our next board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. So board members, you have two technical reports, as you get your questions together, please send them in to Amanda, or if you would rather just bring them with you when you come to the next board meeting. But we will be doing two conversations, two separate conversations at our next meeting. So with that, that brings us to item D, which is our public comment period. We are happy that you are joining us today, this is your, if this is your first time, there is a list of rules to aid you in navigating the decorum for the boardroom. During public comment, we do set aside the first part of the public comment period for students, if there are students who wish to test, who, to provide a public comment. During public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. Excuse me, this is the public's time to speak and the board's time to listen. Comments on non-agenda may be made on non-agenda items, non-action items. If you are here to participate, you will have three minutes to speak. Time permitting, each person will have three minutes to speak. Each person is allowed one opportunity to testify on a non-agenda or non-action item. When thirty seconds remain, a bell will ring to inform you that you can finish your sentence. So during public comment, the S-chair, I will be using the Robert's Rules of Order, which is a historical framework for conducting business in a very civil and respectful manner. The school board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through comments, but to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. There are a few rules listed on the handout. The first is to not attack a member's or speaker's motives. Speakers may point out what he or she believes to be a natural consequence of a board action, but may not engage in speech that personally attack others. We ask that you refrain from disturbing the meeting, which really means no cheering, applause, or outbursts, I have to remember that myself sometimes. Attendees will not be permitted to interrupt the business of the board. No profanity or foul language. There is no place in our public meeting for profanity or swearing. No waving of signs or flyers or posters, but if you do have handouts that you wish to share, you may give them to Ms. Foster, and she will make sure every board member gets one. So with that, as board president, it is my duty to enforce the rules of civility and decorum. As such, speakers may be ruled out of order for violation of these rules. Anyone who does not adhere to these rules and fails to conduct themselves in a civil manner may be removed from the meeting. So with that guidance, we would like to begin our first hour of public comment. And looks like we have, they're all in person, so Carol Hollingsworth. Welcome, Carol. You have three minutes, please state your name.
Good evening, my name is Carla Hollingsworth. I go by Kai, and I am a lifelong Alaskan, graduate of ASD. I'm also an employee, but I am not speaking as an employee tonight, I am speaking as a citizen and as a parent, particularly a parent of a stellar student, I'm here on behalf of the Stellar Parent Group tonight to present a letter from our community to the school board. Stellar is a school devoted to an educational setting which fosters the creation of independent, courageous people capable of dealing with the shifting complexities of the modern world. It runs on the energy and excitement of people who have committed themselves to self-directed learning, with the support of parents and staff that attempts to provide students with a humane education based on freedom and responsibility. This is an excerpt from the Stellar philosophy which was developed by staff, students, and parents together. Here is our letter to the board. Dear members of the Anchorage School Board, Stellar Secondary School is an ASD school grades seven through twelve established almost fifty years ago by parents and teachers in cooperation to develop and inspire self-directed learners. Stellar's school values include: community within our school and beyond, student leadership and ownership of the path of learning, challenging limitations and taking risks, respecting and celebrating differences, freedom, individuality, and responsibility. As members of Anchorage's widely diverse community, we acknowledge that we will not agree on everything. Yet we seek to find ways to speak and interact that increase the well-being and safety of each other, and most importantly, of our students. We have high expectations of ASD teachers, that they will utilize materials in their classes that are appropriate and challenging, covering a wide variety of perspectives. We support student access to age-appropriate literature, reflecting the diversity of our student body, which includes students of different religions, races, socioeconomic classes, gender identities, and sexual orientations. We appreciate that there is a process that the Anchorage community members can use to respectfully challenge specific books if they feel there is a controversial concern for their students. We know that it takes courage, patience, and hard work on everyone's part to give students opportunities to develop responsible freedom. We extend our support to all Stellar students, the excellent teachers, staff, principal, and parents as we continue this journey of building a learning community together. Respectfully, the undersigned members of the Stellar Secondary School community, of which there are over ninety signatures attached to this letter, and there would be more if we were not at the end of the school year and in the midst of graduation and other activities, I want to.
Thank you very much. And if you want to send that with the signatures, you can email it or give it to Amanda, and she can, okay. Next, I'd like to call Robin Pakrul. Please state your name, and you have three minutes.
My name's Robin Pakrul. I have to talk fast. Dear board members, I received an email from someone in the superintendent's office on May fifteenth in response to my request that suits me given reading lists over the summer. I stated that it would be a dereliction of duty not to give students, especially those with the 504 plan or slower readers, this opportunity. I still believe this was the perfect moment to engage students and parents in furthering reading skills and comprehension. The district and the board have asked for parent involvement. You failed all of this by not figuring out how to get these book lists in the hands of all vested parties. The return email I received included AP classes, so let's talk about AP literature classes. Apparently you and senior members were given a copy of my email. I want you to reconsider giving AP students for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year a list of the required reading. We are talking about AP students and their success. In part, this is the response I received. If you are referring to an AP class in the past, many AP high school courses required summer reading prior to coming back for the school year. The district has since stopped this practice at the high school level as it gives unfair expectations on students. I'm asking you, the superintendent, senior leadership, and the responder to my email, to define unfair expectations. I spoke on the radio yesterday about the email I received, I sent the entire conversation to the show host, you baffled him too. None of us can figure out what is meant by the term unfair expectations. At this point, I expect this letter will go further. I have expertise in both American and British systems in regards to year twelve literature studies, here's what I know. Students who are eager to do well want to read the required list beforehand because it settles their anxieties. Reading beforehand gives them the opportunity, both unfamiliar words and terms, it gives them time to think. I encourage students to write in the margins of their books so that definitions and questions could be discussed in class. I encourage them to read together and bond before classes start. Oftentimes, more depth of understanding happens when students are unafraid to express their thoughts and ask questions. The school year can be hectic, especially for students taking advanced classes and participating in sports. Your inability to understand the life of the senior student and give him/her all opportunities to succeed is inexcusable. Counselors are still in their offices, they know who is taking AP literature classes, have them contact AP literature teachers. Have those AP literature teachers send an email to the home of every student announcing the books to be studied next fall. Ask for a return email from the parent guardian, it's a good time for AP teachers to form a bond with next year's students and parents as well. It shows they care. High school parents and principals might want to confirm how many parents responded, this will show they care. I care, I hope you care.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Star Marsette, I don't see her in the room. Okay. That concludes our public comment for the evening. I'd like to remind everyone that you can find other written comment attached to the agenda if there, if there is any other written public comment. if there is any other written public comment. That brings us to Item E.
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. It includes Memorandums Number 147, 084, 133, 134, and 145. Is there any opposition to the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. We have no action items. But so we are moving on to Item G, which is our non-action items. I understand Member Lessons, you wanted to pull a few for discussion?
Yes, thank you. I'm interested in having a conversation about Memo 151, 160, and 158.
Member Lessons would like to have a conversation on Memorandums Number 151, 160, and 158. Seeing and hearing no others, Member Lessons, Number 151, what is your comment?
Sure. I wanted to, well, I wanted to begin by thanking the administration for this afternoon's work session and a tremendous amount of work that went into, I guess, the reason why this memo is here. So for that and for that advocacy, I think, especially Mr. Anderson, for potentially finding some really remarkable funds for ASD to move forward with a really important project. I'm thinking back to November, December, and I remember really trying to share my hope that we would, at some point, strategically deploy school bond debt reimbursement funds as they were intended so as to offset taxpayer burdens and produce additional savings by offloading or front-loading key items from our CIP, thereby improving student health, safety, and learning environments. And I think that this memo is in the spirit of that hope. I would also amend that statement now to say that I would support using FEMA funds for similar purposes. And I really appreciate that the project's at, I think it's 11 area schools: Stellar, Bear Valley, Fire Lake, Spring Hill, Clat, Ravenwood, Xenic Park, Bayshore, Creekside, West, and Ursa Major. And so we've got 11 schools in this memo, and their families reside in 20 out of the 24 legislative districts, if I did my analysis correctly. I think that these projects are really timely, proactive. They focus on safe, functional learning spaces. And I especially appreciate that these projects respond to very recent issues, including snow loads that shuttered classrooms and libraries this past winter. They expedite projects that had been flagged for future bond projects, and they, as we heard, would support service members' families down the road in anticipation of building up Alaska's military service capabilities. So I guess the one question I would have is just to confirm, how much would be remaining in the school bond debt reimbursement funds if about $9.5 million is allocated from that 37.7? I just sort of wanted to hear that my math aligned with what the administration expects to be remaining.
Sure. Through the Chair, we have about $26.4 million remaining after this. We have the $9.5 million allocated here, and then the $1.8 million that we did, was it? No, the last, for that last, was $1.8 million from that last week's meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I'll pause here and see if any other board members have any further questions. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I will echo Member Lessons's comments. The Memo 151 accomplishes a lot, and I think the... Speaking of unfinished business, last fall, we did vote to return to the other large-scale capital project of Inlet View Elementary last fall after the budget cycle, and that in turn kept us very busy with the legislative session, which is now finished. And so things are finally starting to slow down for us, just as we're getting to the end of the year. I am interested in asking administration to craft an amended version of 151 in lieu of an amendment that may or may not be crafted artfully during our meeting, which allocates the remaining $26 million or so to the Inlet View Elementary project, which we voted to take up at a later date. And so I guess with my ask to other board members is if there's support for that, to voice that now so administration would consider the time investment of drafting a replacement and amended memo worthwhile. And then pending any other discussion on this memorandum, I guess the question for Dr. Bryant is, is that reasonable to have a substitute amendment, substitute memorandum drafted that we can then move at our next meeting in lieu of the original memorandum, if we so choose? Thank you.
To make sure I'm understanding, you want to replace memorandum 151 with a new one?
Yeah, I would propose, if the administration feels there's board support after this conversation, that administration drafts an amended version, or an S-version, if you will, that allocates the remaining funds towards Inlet View Elementary, and that be published with our agenda ahead of the meeting for public notice versus an amendment which wouldn't have that posting. And so I'm hopeful that we can have a bit more conversation as to how other board members feel about that concept now to provide that direction to Dr. Bryant and his team.
So hold on. Okay, let's see. Member Holloman, did you have a hand up? Okay, Dr. Bryant?
Sure. Through the President to Member Jacobs, we're happy to assist in preparing an amendment, and then we'll oblige with the will of the board on that issue. I will raise that we'll need to think of the bigger-term strategy in terms of amendments to our CIP, as well as future bonds, which would complement that effort. So that would be multiple conversations. But for the purpose of the next board meeting, we could assist in drafting an amendment such as what you just described.
So I guess I have a couple of questions, a concern. It's my understanding that, first of all, the $26.4 million that will be left, those funds are funds that can be used for anything, correct? We are already, we already know we're going to be in a deficit next year. And I thought we had put Inlet View on the 24 bond. Is that not the case?
The board-approved CIP does have Inlet View on the FY24 bond.
All right. So then the board is now making a diff, will be making a different decision.
Madam President, can I speak to your question?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. The board wouldn't be changing its course of action. The $26 million that's remaining would not be a sufficient amount to have Inlet View removed from the 24 bond. What would change is the amount of free...
The amount that we asked for.
Well, the amount of free capital investment that we can allocate to other projects in the same way that Memo 151 takes items that are actually currently on our CIP for the 24 bond and moves some of those forward. We are freeing up additional space in the 24 bond for other urgent capital needs.
How much is it to build a new school? I can't remember. I know we go back and forth. I should remember. I'm sorry. Forty, I thought it was forty-two. All right. So this is about half of what would be needed. So the intent is to use... Okay, I still get nervous because that's a pool of money that we can use to offset our structural deficit. Because even with the $49 million we're going to get if the governor signs, we're still going to be in a hole. Anyway, Member Lessons?
Maybe this is, thank you, maybe this is a point of order. I believe that we have already allocated that towards capital, so it's not in the general fund currently. It is in its own separate designated for future capital projects. I wanted to ask a Member Jacobs to clarify whether your intent in a substitute memo would be for the rebuild model, which is what the current bond proposal is, or the remodel, which, as I recall, adds things like boiler and renovates the MPR, but doesn't add actual classroom space. And one of them gets you significantly more years to the building, and the other one, maybe a half or two-thirds the number of years. So maybe if you could clarify your intent.
Sure, yeah. So through the President, if I might?
Yes.
Thank you. I would ask that, what administration draft is an amended version of 151 that we can move and discuss at our next meeting that includes the rebuild option, both because this board has never voted or even took up the option for a renovation? We have seen time and time again and demonstrated from our administration, who we, who have the subject matter expertise, that the best value for taxpayer funds is a rebuild in this case. And I think the case can be made that, just last fall, we were talking about how to use the school bond debt reimbursements, and we were looking at allocating all available funds for the purpose of one, one project. If this, if this current memorandum and revised version holds, we will essentially be getting two buildings where we were only looking at one. And that doesn't speak to the other projects that touch and impact the majority of Anchorage legislative districts. And so I think this conversation that we can have more in earnest at our next meeting, should a majority of the board be interested in this proposal, is in line with wisely using taxpayer resources to invest in the capital needs that the district has. We will be receiving, pending any additional action from Juno, one-time funds to use and to mitigate future fiscal cliffs. And the legislature has indicated their intent to address the base student allocation. I don't think our vision and our support for students can wait until that conversation finalizes, because we don't know when that will be. And so we have previously come to consensus on using these funds for capital projects. I think this is a reasonable conversation to have at our next meeting, and then vote on potentially. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Member Lessons?
I just wanted to, I appreciate the notion. I don't know if it's an official motion, but the request...
No, because you can't do it tonight.
Okay, yes, it's not a motion, but I appreciate the intent. I would support that. I think Member Jacobs asked for board members' response to the idea. And I just wanted to say that, for perspective, I think that one of the added values of offsetting part of a new school construction is that, right now, the Inlet View item, as it stands on the CIP, really, I think it's like $37, almost $38 million of a $60 million bond. We just passed a much smaller bond, offsetting $26.4 million of an Inlet View project. I think we're also removing another $5. something million from an item on the bond. That's bringing that potential 2024 bond much further down, maybe by half or more, which would allow us to either have a very small bond again or to bring additional items forward, which, again, in the end, save taxpayers' money and, I think, allow us to be even more proactive, right? It's better to repair these roofs than replace them. So I think that there is some strategic, it gives us a little bit of breathing room to be proactive with some of our larger, long-term capital concerns.
Any other comments on 151? Member Holloman?
I support the idea that we have this discussion. Basically, when we are looking at accomplishing some of these projects, we don't ever put individual projects to vote by the people. We ask for permission to borrow money. And of course, people interpret the results of that vote any number of ways. But when we see the need to renovate or replace a school, we have to figure out a way to do it. And I don't think we're there yet. But some, some way of putting operating funds or funds that came from the legislature for capital projects along with bond money makes a lot of sense to me if we can figure out a way to make that happen.
Member Wilson?
I'm going to agree with Member Holloman that I feel like putting forth too large of a bond for our community is very stressful for the community. And I got to experience that the first time. It was part of the bond allocation project first year on the board. And I would like to see, continue to see fairly reasonable bonds put forth through the community because I feel like they are more apt to support those. Funding an entire school, I think, is difficult for our community to support. But I really want the community on board. So a portion of these capital funds, in addition to getting the support from the community through the bond, as well as what Kelly was talking about in regards to adding additional capital needs for safety and security for our school district on the bond, tend to, the community tends to be very supportive of. So I would support this conversation as well.
Any other comments? Member Donley?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. As far as this fund's already being allocated to capital, that can be changed anytime there's a majority voted this board to do it. I really agree with remarks by the President as far as keeping our options available for utilizing this money as a shock absorber for the still about $50 million gap we're faced, even if the current proposal that's going to the governor is fully approved as far as increased funding. I don't think this is a wise thing to do, to spend this money at this time when we've got that massive of a deficit looking at us for the 24-25 school year. And I also don't think the timing is appropriate for such a momentous decision as to tear down this school and build a new one and to fund it without, after it was rejected by voters two cycles ago, without going to the voters first and getting authorization for the funding. I think it's a serious mistake. And it also requires much more significant notice than just being one amendment option that's before us at the next meeting. I think this is the kind of thing that screams out to be on the non-action calendar as an appropriate thing in two meetings, or the meeting before any meeting that goes on a vote, and not to be off the calendar and then to show up as an amendment before the meeting. I don't think that's right. I think that's really wrong, actually, especially when it's a project that was rejected by the majority of the voters in the Anchorage area. I really think, and this is, I think I've voted six times against this project now, but I do support a major remodel for Inlet View, similar to what we successfully did with Turnigan Elementary School. But I don't support tearing down the existing building and building a new one in a different location. I think that's just the wrong project in the wrong place at the wrong time. We're going to be looking again at proposals to shut down numerous of our schools. We were advised by the administration that it could be as many as 10 schools this next budget cycle. We might be looking at considering shutting down. And to say to the voters, "We're going to tear down a school, build a brand-new one," while asking voters to go along with shutting down any schools is, I think, a really inconsistent and difficult message. To restate the problems with Inlet View, it needs a major remodel, but it is not overcrowded by the original standards that this district utilized six years ago. And even if it was under the new standards, then it's only created by the artificial occupancy of the students from other areas of town there. If it wasn't, hadn't been approved for so many zone exemptions, and I think it's over 50 students there come from not the neighborhood, but from other parts of town, it wouldn't be anywhere close to being. But we would now, under a new assessment of how to determine overcrowding, be at maximum capacity. I just think this is not the time to, this is towards the very end of the last bit of money we're going to have as a fiscal shock absorber going into a very significant budget deficit in '24, '25. And we shouldn't be committing these funds to this particular project at this time, and certainly not with a lack of this full proposal. project at this time. And certainly not with a lack of this full proposal being on a non-action calendar to a meeting prior to any meeting it's actually voted on, especially since it was rejected by voters the last time it was on the ballot.
Comments on memo? Thank you, Member Donley. Comments, Member Higgins, on memorandum 151?
Thank you. In, in our discussion, I remember about October, we decided to postpone this at, you know, for a period of time, I think it was October, November, and, and to deal with it and deal with it later. And we're dealing with it now. And doing that discussion, the discussion was how much money would it take to renovate it? And we're talking about the money, about the amount of money that is being proposed that we put into it. We're not putting in the full amount of money for a new school, but the amount that it would take for renovation is about the twenty, twenty-five million in that category is what we were told because of the extensive amount of remodeling that would be required. It's also not identified, I don't believe, as one of the schools that we would target for closing. And we're looking for a lot of strategic reasons for it. I will say this, that some of the closures are economically impacted, but there's also strategically, operationally, there, I think that there were some goals there that's trying to be reached. But I'm looking at this amount in the sense that we are not fully funding rebuilding it. We are providing funds that would be necessary because that school to remain operational needs major work. There's no question that way. And the age, the condition, it just needs to be done. And the, the amount that being proposed in here, whether it's well invested to remodel it versus a new one is a discussion I think the board has and the public weighs in on or however else we want. But this is, this is close to that amount. Now, I remember, uh, uh, Member Donley talking about potentially putting in twenty million, I believe, at that point or, or amount, that amount. And that was a little, that was less than what it was needed for, for remodel to address all of the major conditions that need to be addressed. So I, I support the idea of putting it on here. I think that's critical. And I also don't think is the bond that had this on it was not approved. It was a very close vote. And I think there are a lot of reasons that people vote for and against something. And to put one item on there as the sole basis for it, I won't agree with that. But I will agree, it was in the bond that wasn't approved within that. But I think this is a, this is an amount that in, in November, we were saying this is, this would have been okay. And I think consistent with that, I support this idea. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next discussion item, which is memorandum one six zero. Member lessons?
Um, let me pull up my notes really quickly. This is really more of a, an opportunity for feedback and a couple of maybe points of clarification from the administration. I know this is probably going to be an issue in governance on Thursday. So I really appreciate Member Jacobs' work incorporating feedback from a prior governance meeting. There was input from an Alaska Association of School Board model policy. There were board member comments. I think this is already stronger and more relevant. And I just wanted to tip my hat to the legwork that went in. I wanted to really ask a question about, there's a sentence of, under the instruction, I think this is new potential language, that the district shall adopt one or more evidence-based curricula shown to decrease the use of alcohol, non-prescribed opioids, and other drugs which educate students.
Uh, member, we're on one, one six oh, but if you want to continue with one-
Yeah, that is, it is memo. Oh, the calendar. I'm sorry. I, I got, I jumped one. Do you want me to hold my comments?
No, go on if you want to clarify that you're talking one five.
Yeah, it's, it's, and maybe, so there's a question about an item under instruction on memo one five eight. And it says that we shall adopt an evidence-based curriculum shown to decrease alcohol use, opioid use, and other drugs. And I guess that's new and different. And I, maybe this is a pointed question to hopefully be asked in governance. Does that exist as opposed to, you know, the current language of the policy doesn't say that we would adopt an evidence-based curricula? It says something different. It's a little bit less prescriptive. It's like maybe all her instructions. So maybe Member Jacobs can comment on that. And maybe eventually we can have staff input on whether that's a possibility.
Yeah. So my understanding is the Chair of the Massey Opioid Task Force has strong feelings and potentially data to back up and assert that the Kelsey's lesson that has been crafted and improved over recent years is successful. I don't know that it's something that's, that's gone out to a formal study. And I'm completely open to modifying that language to make it achievable and less onerous. Well, I'm attempting to fulfill the underlying ask, which is consistency in awareness for our middle and high school students on the science of addiction. I haven't yet had the conversation with relevant staff from Dr. Bryant's teams. I'm hopeful we can circle a bit during our governance meeting later this week on that topic to hear their level of comfortability with the current language, see if they have suggestions. I know that most, more recently, we are ramping up efforts internally and apart from this policy, which certainly there are justifications for the methods of instruction that we're engaging and the guest speakers we're having. And so there's, there's clearly data behind it. But this current language isn't a sticking point for me. It's really just a matter of how we would like it outlined in the policy. Thank you.
Member lessons? Yeah, thank you very much for that. The only other thing I would, I wanted to raise, there was an item on the very last page of the proposed policy saying that students possessing, selling, and/or using alcohol, marijuana, or other drugs related paraphernalia shall be subject to disciplinary procedures which may result in suspension or expulsion. And I thought that maybe it needs a little bit of clarification because it doesn't really define, I mean, any, you're a student all the time, but what if you sell or possess these things outside of the school day or off school campus, or if social media is a part of it? It just, it seems kind of complicated. And I feel like that would be something that I would hope to address in governance.
And, and I think that's the appropriate place.
Yeah. And, and I just wanted to raise it because I won't be there.
Because I know you won't be there. So, yeah, we're taking notes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that opportunity. I will pause there with one fifty eight.
Okay, any other comments on memorandum number one five eight? If not, we're moving on to one six oh. Member lessons?
Okay. So again, I'm really supportive of the proposed changes in this memorandum. And I thank the administration for preparing them, submitting them for the board's consideration. I've been noodling on a question since calendar, the calendar is part of this memo, and it just seemed like a reasonable time to bring it up, that arose out of the Science of Reading Conference. And there may be some districts in the state who are going to be adjusting their parent teacher conference dates to align with a requirement that parents are notified that their student is not proficient within like a fifteen day window of screening. And so given that the parent teacher conference date is in October, October twenty fifth and twenty sixth, it seems like that might be a little while after screening. And I guess, does the count, the question would be, does the calendar need to be further adjusted in light of any Alaska REEDS Act regulations? Or are we okay with things as they stand? I mean, this wasn't a recommendation. This is just an opportunity for me to raise a question.
Yeah, through the President. I appreciate the question. I wouldn't anticipate it being prudent to reactivate the calendar committee to make further adjustments than what's in the memo for a number of logistical reasons to inform the family. But I do know that we have a really great team within academic services that's really trying to figure out what do we need to do long term? So that way, we can leverage things like the calendar to meet all the requirements of Alaska REEDS. But even at the state level, there are a number of question marks as to what needs to be implemented and when. And is there a possibility toward districts can phase in aspects of Alaska REEDS? So there's a lot of conversations happening in the background, and we wouldn't want to make too many large changes so close to the end of the year.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions on memorandum number sixty? All right, these will come back before you at our next meeting on June ninth, I believe. No, June sixth. Okay, moving on. Let's see, public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have anybody else signed up? Oh, Star Marsette. Welcome, Ms. Marsette. Good to see you. Welcome. You have, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I know the routine. First of all, I want to apologize for being late. I looked at the, something on board docs, and it said it started at seven. And then executive meeting was from six to seven. And I thought, okay, so they changed the time. So I'll go at seven. But so I'm late. I'm sorry. Apologize. Actually, nothing bad. I wanted to just share that I visited over at Mountain View Elementary. And I can tell you, when I walked in the door, it was magical. It was, I couldn't believe the difference in that school. I mean, it was welcoming. There was places for parents to sit. It was diversity everywhere in the hallways and the staff. Everything that I saw embodied what we and the school board now is trying to do. And I saw that in the staff and the employees and the students. And if you have not been over to that school, you really need to go because it is amazing. It's not just the principal, but the staff that have made the difference in that school. They play music during lunch. She's setting up a robotics room for next year. These are things these kids have not had before. So it's so exciting. I just got so excited about it that I thought, well, you know, there's a board meeting coming up before I leave. So I'll just come and share and just say, if you have not been there, you need to go because it is truly amazing.
And I think they got, she, they did a new, oh, I'm sorry. I'm not supposed to talk to you, even though you're an old board member. I'm, I'm not supposed to talk. And then there's just one other thing I want to say, and that is East High School. I will just say that there needs to be more policing in the bathrooms. There have been things happening in there. My grandson was beat up by a group. Of course, they won't ever say anything. And because it's the last day of school, I'm not going to share everything that's happened to him in there. But he's been offered drugs. It's, it's a little frightening with what's going on in that bathroom. So I just wanted to share that maybe next year, you guys can take a look at that, or the district can take a look at that and see what we can do a little better. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. I'll talk to you later.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to provide public comment? All right, that brings us to item H, Superintendent Update.
All right, thank you, Madam President. I have just a couple of updates tonight. The school year's wrapping up, and it was energizing to personally shake the hands of thousands of seniors as they prepare to head off to college careers and their secondary lives. It was also a celebration of the incredible families and staff members and building leaders who made graduation possible. So we wish our students, families, and staff a safe and joyful summer, and we look forward to welcoming you back next school year. So as we transition to summer, the goal is to reflect and start coordinating some of our upcoming major initiatives. We'll begin carefully planning over the next year to prepare for all sixth graders attending middle schools and our new school start times. So those changes go into effect for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This summer will also be about taking time to continue preparing for the upcoming launch of our new K three ELA curriculum. And speaking of the new ELA curriculum, this change dovetails nicely with our shift to district-wide professional learning communities going into effect next school year, this upcoming fall. So ASD has been implementing PLCs for high schoolers, or high school teachers, rather. And now we'll expand that district-wide. So PLCs will give instructional staff an hour every week to learn from one another, collaborate with one another, to support student learning. So for elementary and middle school families, this does mean that school will start later by one hour on Mondays only. And remember, high schools are already doing this, so there's no changes there. Bus transportation will also start an hour later. And for families that would benefit from a consistent drop-off time, we're here to support you. We will have schools open for student drop-off at the normal time on Mondays. While instructional staff are engaged in their PLCs, other staff will be on-site to supervise students before the school day begins on Mondays. So we'll prioritize getting families' school-level details about what that looks like as soon as possible. But as you can imagine, principals will need time to work with the district and work with their teams to design an individual plan for how to implement this. So more to come on that. And all that to say, the shift to PLCs is definitely an adjustment, but it's a positive investment of time to support teachers and improve student outcomes. So to sum it up, late start Mondays will take place this upcoming school year, and the buildings will be open for student drop-off at the normal time to support families through this shift. And I'll add a quick disclaimer that if you have a student that attends an ASD charter or alternative school, your school might not follow this schedule. Why? That's because many of those schools already had PLCs built in to their state-approved calendars in various ways. So if this applies to you, please stay tuned for an update from your school. So as we spend the next year planning for the logistics of new school start times, we'll also learn details about how the funding for early childhood programming through Proposition fourteen can be utilized to improve access to affordable childcare for our families. And lastly, we'll continue to monitor student transportation staffing throughout the summer to keep the community aware and informed of any possible concerns as proactively as possible. Since last year's transportation staffing shortage, we've increased wages, we've offered summer jobs to all drivers, and we have asked drivers to provide notice of their intent to return earlier than ever before. These strategies can help, and we'll implement additional strategies as needed based on the data. And I'll close by giving a special shout out to Alaska Teacher of the Year, Catherine Walker of Diamond High School. That's such a major accomplishment, and we're thankful to have excellent educators like Ms. Walker in our schools. You've made Team ASD incredibly proud. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Questions for Dr. Bryant on his report? Comments? Member lessons?
I have a question, but it is not related to what you just reported on. We currently have dashboards on progress towards board goals. And like, we have a FastBridge data dashboard. Will we have an M class? Like, will that be a part of our data dashboard suite?
We'll provide an update. I believe we, actually, I got an answer. Yes, we will. And we can also do a deep dive in our conversation in June on, on the goals.
Okay.
Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to share the concerns expressed by former President Marsette about the East High bathrooms and restrooms. We've all gotten those reports of really serious, dangerous things happening in there. What exactly is the administration doing about that concern?
I'd love to provide additional insight on that, perhaps in a board connect, so we can take time to gather all the different things that we put in place and what we need to do to continue to ensure that it's even safer than before if there are still concerns as of recent.
Another question?
A follow-up?
Yeah. Why doesn't this school district provide a reading list for AP classes? And for that matter, why don't we do it for all students? Give them, give parents a guide as some help, as something to have kids to do over the summer with reading? I mean, it just seems real common sense. So why don't we do it?
I'd be happy to provide some insights on that. I know the team had prepared some logistical considerations, given the, there are many different classrooms and different English subjects. So there may be some logistical considerations, but we'll make sure that the board is fully aware of what those concerns are. And if there are things that the board would wish to be done to make that process easier and better for families.
Thank you. Other comments on this, for any, on anything with the superintendent? All right. Not seeing any. Thank you, Dr. Bryant. We're now on item J, School Board and Administration Comments. Who wants to start today? Why don't we start with Member Wilson? We'll start in the middle today.
I feel like I just got put in front of the classroom. I just got moved. I've had the honor to attend many graduations this month. It was, it was amazing. And every one of them I enjoyed tremendously. Got to celebrate the end of the school year with students. And congratulations to all of our students and all the best to our graduates as they embark on their next pathway. as they embark on their next pathway. Kind of wish Josh was here, so he could be cheering them on too. But I understand it's the last day of school. I was at King Tech High School this morning. I wanted to highlight there was a signing event for students that were signed directly into apprenticeship programs. And so it was similar to the NCAA signing events, only these students actually get to start their career or have started their career. So one of them in particular, I've known for many years. She's one of my coworker's daughters who is who is part of the now part of the Teamsters. And she has gotten her she's gotten her CDL through a new program that King Tech is working with them on. And she actually will be starting work in Valdez here in the next couple of weeks. So so many amazing stories of what the partnerships that our schools are doing with community business and nonprofits and such amazing students that we have. So I'm very excited for all of them. Also, ASD Connect published yesterday, so please check it out. There's lots of good information and updates on our school start time plans. And I would also like to give out a shout out to Lisa Miller from Team ASD. She's leaving us after tomorrow, and she's been a tremendous asset to the communications department, especially during COVID and especially during this year. Her expertise in media relations is top notch. So thank you to Lisa. You will be missed. And also, our communications committee meeting is going to take place on Thursday at noon, where we will recap the year and what the plans are for summer. So please feel free to join us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member lessons?
It was a real honor to attend the Bartlett graduation and then see it displayed on the front page of the ADN. It was a really remarkable celebration of our students, their families, and in the words of one of our student speakers, you know, it does take a village. You know what people can't hear, though, are the quiet comments that the people sitting up front get to share. And I was really just appreciative of all of the hard work that, in this case, Mr. Prince, our the Bartlett principal shared. He said, this student was somebody that he managed to talk out of quitting three weeks ago. And that student finished it up, got made it all the way across the stage, made it across the finish line. And I don't know, for me, I think that school is full of all of those quiet moments. I mean, so many quiet moments. And so graduation, yes, it is a celebration of our twelfth graders, but that those accomplishments rest on all of the the small moments that begin so many years before. And so I just applaud all of our educators, all of our support staff. When a student is welcomed into the building by a crossing guard and given a hug by the BPO, the lunch, you know, support staff, all of these people pull it all together. So I'm just really appreciative of everyone.
Were you done? Oh, okay, thank you. Member Holloman?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to meet with the PTSO at South High by their request. And I know that a lot of the board members have a lot of excess time. You might look at talking to some of the PTOs or PTSOs or PTAs. One of the things I always found fascinating about their meetings, as far as I can tell, there's the one group that actually meets, figures out what the problem is, figures out how they're going to solve it and who's going to do it, and that's the end of the meeting. Like, they actually do things in the meeting, after which other stuff immediately happens. But it would be, I think, a way that if we occasionally are attending some, it might deepen our connection to the community. Certainly make it available to PTAs to request a board member to to show up and have a discussion with them about about various things. Also, I wanted to say that I think a community member has been in touch with a couple of us about the community health clinic. And it looks like that's something that we may be able to allow to happen in our building next year. It is a hugely meaningful thing to a lot of people in the community, people that can't get in to see a doctor, actually get quality care for free. Just kind of reminiscent of the vaccine clinic here in this building, where a lot of people couldn't figure out any other way to just show up here without having to have an appointment, stand in line and get treated and taken care of. It sort of mirrors that, and that had such a positive effect on the community when we were able to do that here. And the huge benefit here is we don't have to actually do the services. That's all taken care of by other people. But they had a real good run this year over in the AT&amp;T Center. Being in one of our schools where they really are closer to the houses and community would mean a whole lot for them. And lastly, I know that that we'll be looking at reinstating some things as we do get the final budget from the legislature. If we can look at doing some things to encourage science fairs again. That was one of those things that disappeared without me realizing it. ASD used to be heavily involved in it. There is a group that's making a state science fair happen, but we're not having so many in our buildings anymore. And that just means a whole lot of kids that would have participated don't. It's only your much more enthusiastic kids that are ready to go to a bigger competition that do it. And I realize there there are a lot of obstacles to it, and a lot of it is people and money. But as we're looking at, there's a way to encourage that, I would hope that we would. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Holloman. Let's go, Member Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to, there was some remarks at our last meeting regarding the function of our SROs, Anchorage Police Officers in our high schools. And I just want to clarify that for me, I think our SROs are an essential first line of defense, protecting our students from violence in all our high schools. Communities and states all over our nation are now requiring such security in all their public schools. And I think the most reasonable next step in Anchorage is just what this board has adopted as a resolution. I think it was four years ago, maybe five years ago, and that was to request the expansion of the SRO coverage into our all our middle schools. I fear and am concerned as a parent and as a citizen of the lack of coverage, particularly in our middle schools. And I believe they they are there in addition to the wonderful functions they serve from a community and societal point of view. But they are there to protect our students from violent threats.
Thank you, Member Donley. Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick comments to wrap up. I will echo notes of congratulation and appreciation for all of our graduates and the families that, I mean, I don't have a graduate this year, but I should have two next year. And the amount of work it takes to support a student inside the home and outside is significant. So it really is a family accomplishment. So congratulations to ASD families, congratulations to our students and all of our educators for making the ceremonies that we had these last few weeks possible. In addition, I'll just I'll just say regarding public notice of agenda items, I think this board does an exemplary job of going above and beyond to make the public aware, engaged, and a part of our process. I've watched this board's meetings for years as they are on YouTube, if anyone's looking for something to do on a Friday or Saturday. Our strength of our our group is public engagement, so I strongly oppose and and couldn't disagree more with any assertion that this group is anything but transparent and accessible in the things that we discuss here. And so I'm proud to be on the body for that reason. So I hope we continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. All right, Member Higgins.
I've got over four.
No, you only get.
Four hours. I just can't begin where to start. You all leave early, huh?
No, sir.
First of all, I just simply say, hi, Star. We couldn't say anything when you testified, but hearing having a former board member come up here for having seen in a while is nice. And so welcome. I appreciate that. Appreciate the graduation ceremonies. I attended Save and West. It was just so positive and so much reaction. I appreciate the fact I went to Save before the graduation. I went there the day before because I wanted to. I've been there many times and wanted to see it one more time. And it's actually improved so much in so many respects. And the last time I saw it, just more more just enthusiastic. And it was fun meeting with the students and staff there. So I appreciate that. As far as West being the largest graduation class, I guess, so I guess workers comp covers my hand from shaking everybody, but we'll cover that separately. Appreciate the legislature giving us additional funds. Upsetting that it's one time funding the way they did it, the fact that we're not going to get where we need to be. We've got all kinds of issues. I would just encourage the the public to get behind the legislatures and push that they are supposedly going to have a special session, maybe in October, to try to deal with the funding issue. They're not going to resolve, they're living up to their commitments if they don't have the source of funding to do it. And that's that's their responsibility to figure that out. But I hope that they adjourn for that. I hope that they finally deal with the crisis that they're headed for. And we know that's going to happen. It's going to make our budget process very complex, I believe, and somewhat depressing somewhat, but change is in the air. And I'll say today was the last day with Abbott Loop community, with the Abbott Loop Elementary neighborhood. But I welcome the Alaska Native Cultural Todd School. I'm glad that they are getting a school of their own. So that's a real big emphasis. And my last comment is just my concern on staffing. Did a good job of the article in the paper, where the teachers and the other staffing and that, and how are we going to maintain what we got? I don't know with the large numbers of turnovers that we've got and the reduction nationwide in, you know, staffing capabilities and not having a defined benefit retirement system and unsure funding. You know, new graduates coming out, they're looking at, you know, lots of options and it's difficult. They're looking at salaries, the benefits, they're looking at where the future of that school is going, the commitment from the state and community behind it. It's going to make it a tough process, and we're going to have to do what we can. I appreciate teachers here that are doing that job. I I hope to the degree we can, we can keep as much retention as possible because so many kids count on you. So just a push out there, we would thank you for all the teachers and for a great year that they did. They did a lot of work. So with that, all you, the other four hours and ten minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Higgins. Okay, so I, you know, I, by the time it gets to me, everything has been said. So our graduates are amazing. They're going to go out and do fantastic things. And I know their parents are probably, it's a bittersweet time for parents, but I think it's really sweet when they do start understanding just how difficult it is to make your own arrangements, your earn your own money and all those things. But I have no doubt that our kids are going to do great. So and I I do want to thank the board for making the graduations, no matter how small or how large. I want to thank you guys for making those a priorities. And I want to thank Member Higgins for covering one for me. Member Jacobs covered a public event for me. I really do appreciate that because it really is important for us to show up and be present. I had a great meeting with Chief Guzman, who is Chief Master Sergeant on Jay Bear. Anyway, he works with the Jay Bear families. He, Adele, and I met to talk about those five hundred people that are coming and what their needs are. So and I realize in talking to them that while we meet with our with our community councils, we really don't meet with anybody on base on a regular basis. So I will be talking with governance to see if we can't add at least a some kind of and and I'll for this year, I'll take it, but for make it a permanent part of our schedule, that we do have a board representative that meets with military with the military liaisons. It was a very enlightening meeting. I sent those notes on to the superintendent. And with that, I really have nothing else except to give Dr. Bryant one final opportunity to.
No further comment. Have a great night, everyone.
All right.
Madam President, move to adjourn.
Moving second to adjourn, hearing no opposition. We are adjourned at seven.